Call to order, the regular city council meeting for March 11th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone is present. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from February 25th, 2019. Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, Lisa, on top of page three, about a third of the way down, says, "Councilmember Kennedy stated that he had," should read, "he had spent some time with Ron Beeson and Evelyn regarding the upcoming, the research in that." And that's all I have. Remove the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening.
I'll move the bills. I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the attorney bills this evening.
I'll move the bills, the attorney bills. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So at this point, we're going to approve the agenda, but we will have a moment to look at the consent agenda next.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember Walton, you had a concern about tonight's consent agenda. Go ahead.
Correct. The pint-sized marathon is actually put on by Footprint Fitness, who I am a member at large, so I would like to move that off the consent agenda, making it a new business number one before the other items, so that I can not take partake in the discussion or vote.
Think we got a problem with that?
Is that a motion?
Oh.
Yes, I'd like to make that a motion to move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so the road closure for the pint-sized marathon will move down to new business number three, Paul. Does that sound good?
That's right.
At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Hi, folks. Josie Kearns, Cultural Arts Commission, 329 Lyon Boulevard. I just wanted to let you know that the opening reception for the quilt, the fabulous quilt and fiber art show is this Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. right here in City Hall, 335 South Warren Street. I hope you'll all come and have fun. There are children, there's children's work, there are needlepoint, cross-stitching, applique, and a bunch of things that I don't understand that our wonderful Chair, Pat Peruski, does understand. And it's going to be an amazing event. And there were 26 applicants, entrants this time, and 55 pieces, and we're waiting for three to be sent from Chicago in the next couple of days. So it's going to be fabulous. I hope you can all come.
Thank you, Josie.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of the downtown. And Mr. Donahue?
Yes. Okay, I provided each of you with a information. I was in Washington, D.C. last week, meeting with all 14 Michigan congressional reps, the four new ones, just from Oakland County, and our two senators. And basically, the packet that is behind the itinerary was, our strategy was to keep the tools that we need for economic development and downtown development, just leave those alone. We need them. Environmental, historic preservation tax credits, and other programs that are very important. EPA grant programs, things as such, depending on the project. So we had a great discussion, especially we had longer time in each of the four new representative offices. And we feel that the support information, we have fact sheets on projects around the state of Michigan that have used these programs, and they're programs we'd like to use here in South Lyon. The four-day, the entire four days, all the expenses were paid by the Michigan Downtown Association. As a public employee, I cannot do any lobbying, and I could not do lobbying at the county, but for the private organization, we can go stronger. And that's why the report shows those agencies that we want to keep going. So it was a good four days. We felt it was very productive, especially with the new people. Was on the phone today with the owner. Any questions on that? I'm sorry.
Look forward to reading it.
Okay. It might fall asleep.
This is it, right here.
So I was on the phone today with the owner of 125, 127, and 131 East Lake, Mr. Richard Rowe. And he's signing his contract with the painter to get those buildings, the three-color Victorian paint scheme done. He'd like to get it done by the end of May. So we're going to plan a big event, because it certainly takes a big step forward on preserving our architectural heritage, and so we want to congratulate him and make a big deal out of that. Spring Ladies Night Out is planned for Friday, May 10th. Details will follow soon. The Chair of the event is Annie Butchtrup, owner of Lemon Tree. So she is working hard on her work plan for the event, and so we will have more details soon. The last item is, there's a new city I mentioned before, DDA and citywide event schedule, promotional piece that's planned to debut by the end of April. So we're just waiting on a couple of dates. I need to talk to Josie about cultural arts dates, and a couple firm the dates up from the Historical Commission. But we will have a brand-new brochure piece, working with city manager, and it will be used in many locations, not just as a standalone. It'll be on the city's website, DDA Facebook page, and other publications. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I have a quick question. Do we have a status update on 110 Detroit?
There was conversation last week, and the week before. The attorney, I spoke with the attorney, there was communication with Tim. I don't know, Tim, you want to?
There was a resident or somebody inquired about viewing, and apparently, the attorney for the owner scheduled that, and it was supposed to have occurred last week.
That's the latest.
To purchase it, correct?
Interested.
I didn't get any detail about, I assume that, yes.
So I'm interested to see what happens with this property, just because it is in a prime location, it's a beautiful piece of land, it's a beautiful home. If you hear anything additional, can you just provide counsel and update? Either one.
Sure.
We'll do it through Bob.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We have had a person express an interest, but the attorney is doing their due diligence, and they contacted the hospital, and they are keeping it open.
Great.
But I think he would like to have some closure fairly soon, and so we'll know. We'll see what this last person.
No rush. I was just curious. Thank you so much.
Dan?
Councilmember Kirshew.
If I could ask, who is it that would like some closure? The owner?
The owner.
Okay. Because, I mean, is there a clock running for us to be able to impose ourselves on them?
Well, I think of our list of five, it's the most active with positive light at the end of the tunnel, because they're active people. And while they have a fairly good offer on the table, they're waiting for a period of time. I don't know what it is. But they, it looks like they took the hospital, Providence Med Center, off of their list by one of the last communications we had. We did express an interest. We don't have a historic district, but I did mention that it has historic architectural merit, and so we were, myself, my opinion, not speaking for the council or the city, I said, "We hoped it could be saved, if possible, by whoever purchases it."
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, certainly, I agree that we're hoping like crazy people recognize the value of that architecture. I just don't want to find out that we're having the same conversation a year from now when we still haven't tried to lean on them a little bit.
That, that one property looks positive, and I hope it will take action soon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Parisian?
I appreciate the fact that you're emphasizing how important the historical value and the historical nature of that property is, because it is, it's one of a kind.
Sure. And we have to be careful, because I can't make a misstatement, because it's not in a local historic district. We have no control. But we can talk about how important the architecture is and let the cards, chips fall as they may.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, we'll move on to new business tonight. Budget amendments. Amend beginning fund balances to agree with ending fund balances from fiscal year 2018. Lori is here, if anyone has any questions.
There was a number of places that I wasn't able to understand what had taken place to amend what the numbers were. There's no reflection of where the additional or less revenue came from. Simply changing numbers, and I don't, I don't see what, what it was pulled out of.
Which pages?
All those numbers came from the audit.
Okay.
From last year. So if we didn't reach all our expenditures or revenues, it changed. But all the numbers that are on here are from out of the audit.
Okay. I mean, it seems like that should have been the title of that column, then, the audited numbers, so.
Well, we're amending the revenues to match the audit, so it's still the amended column.
Okay.
And Maggie had brought up another point earlier. In water and sewer, we'll see, last year, we went with net, what's called net position. All requests that we go back to fund balance. So that's why you see us going from a rather large $25, $26 million number to a $2 million position. So, and what that is, is really spendable cash. That does not include restricted assets in the beginning fund balance that we're changing. What the net position includes is all your cash balances, restricted and otherwise, and a lot of your infrastructure. That's why that number is so high. But we wanted to go back to fund balance, and showing that is the beginning.
Is there a separate column for the restricted? I'm just.
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just not shown. Unless we decide to do a major capital improvement, then we can use those funds. But right now, I think we, I just thought it was best to go with that number.
Well, I mean, I think it makes, makes good sense to know what you actually can use freely.
Right.
But I just, I think it's also important that we have an understanding of where our restricted position is, so we know how much money is sitting there, so.
Well, I can change that.
Yeah.
To include that number, if you like.
I got a question. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Lori, is, are these figures that you've given us here, I'm right on that page, are these sort of written in stone, fixed, going into our budget meetings, which are coming up?
Well, these are for the current fiscal year. So it depends on how we end up at the end of the year. We can make a better estimate of what our beginning fund balance will be for next year by doing these amendments this year. So the amended beginning fund balance, those are in the audit, those are etched in stone.
Okay.
So those are the numbers that we've reported to the state. Those are the numbers that are in our official audit.
Okay.
So that's where those numbers came from.
But when we go into the budget meeting, something might be amended at that time, possibly.
For the workshops?
Yeah, when we hold our budget work.
Yeah, I don't think those are going to change between now and then.
Oh, okay, all right.
This, what this does, Carl, it gives us a better starting place for next year's budget. Gives us a more accurate number to go with, with our beginning fund balance. And then when we add our revenues to that, we subtract our expenditures, that will show us where we're at at the end of the year. So going into the new year, by adjusting these balances from last fiscal year, we can make a better estimate of what we're going to start out with, rather than spreading that estimate over two or three years. It gets a little muddy.
Okay, all right. That's it.
Good.
Just wondering, Paul, what was, what was the rationale for the change of philosophy for that reporting on the wastewater?
It's, so when anybody is looking at the budget, they can see the net cash, cash position in which we have, instead of looking at all the assets that you had, have including infrastructure. If someone was to look at that asset, or that list of the net position and see it's being $26 million, they're going to think that, oh, the city has $26 million in cash. No, that includes all the assets, the infrastructure and such that's under the ground. We want to show what's available for cash, so potential use, or be able to take out, to be able to purchase, or make improvements to the infrastructure, water, sewer, whatever it may be.
I assume that was the reason, but thank you.
But I think it is important, though, you bring up a good point, is to show restricted assets, or restricted funds in cash, so we can, we should be able to report that, and we can certainly do that in the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, you got a comment?
The additional reason, in the wisdom of what Paul did, is because sometimes, when you calculate these numbers based on net assets, the value of the assets can vary depending on the period in which they're evaluated. So assets of themselves can increase or decrease depending on whether or not you have good economic times or bad economic times, whereas the cash balance is far more reflective of what you absolutely have available at the time. So your balance tends to be a little bit more stable when you reflect it from just a cash point of view, rather than a net asset where you have, you have a tendency for fluctuation.
Okay, I make, make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business number two this evening. Board of Ethics Recommendation on Councilmember Richards. Explanation of this topic is the Board of Ethics has met to discuss the October 31st, 2018 incident involving Councilmember Richards. The Board has issued a list of facts and findings that is included with our packet, along with other items pertaining to the issue. Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first and foremost wanted to read into the record, because we, as a council, received the packet from the Board of Ethics and their report that they provided, and it will be eventually public after tonight's meeting, or after next, in the next two weeks, when it's approved. So this will eventually be public. But for the record, I just wanted to state some key facts and read them, so that the public can, that's sitting in the audience, can understand what we're looking at tonight. Please keep in mind that the Board of Ethics is the second neutral party that has analyzed Carl Richards' behavior and found it to be inappropriate. The Board of Ethics met on February 19th and found that based upon the foregoing, the Board recommends that council find that Councilmember Richards violated Section 2-73 of the Ethics Ordinance, and express its disapproval of his behavior to Councilmember Mary Parisian, and censure him for such conduct which tends to undermine the respect for all city council members, city council, and the city's administration, and the city as a local governmental body, and discharge him, or discourage him, from such behavior in the future. They went on to say that with this being said, the Board, he believes he does not have the power to make, or the Board does not have the power to make the disciplinary recommendation. But we, the Board, need to send a message to the council that we believe that this was a pretty egregious violation of the Ethics Ordinance, and they need to understand the time and the effort that the Board spent to come to this conclusion, and that the discipline is up to them. With that being said, I think we should take into light what the Board of Ethics has recommended, and censure Carl, and I move to make that censure.
Well, I'll second their motion, but I, I do want to make a comment as well. I had prepared a resolution that kind of accomplishes that, and I'd like to read that, just to.
All right, Councilmember Kirshew, is it right if we come back to you, if Councilmember Kennedy had something he'd like to add before that?
Sure.
Oh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To begin, I'd like to recognize the efforts of the South Lyon Board of Ethics and its chair members Suzanne Musket and Angela Baker, and Chairman Don Beagle. I appreciate the diligence and professionalism they displayed in their review of this issue, in establishing their findings, and in formulating the recommendation. Thank you for your help. To Councilmember Richards, since becoming a city council member, your behavior, both in words and actions, have brought disgrace to this council, and have tarnished the reputation of this city and its residents. I believe the Board of Ethics accurately described the most recent event, when they said your behavior has been an egregious violation of the Ethics Ordinance. Further, to date, it has cost the city well over $12,000 to address the consequences of your actions, here as well as those from January of 2018. To put that into perspective, $12,000 is one-half of the estimated cost to repair the parking area at the Historical Village. If for some reason the city lacks the funds to address that item in next year's budget, I will ask that you explain to Larry, Linda, and the other members of the Historical Society that the city had to spend the money addressing the issues you have caused, instead of fixing the parking lot. Your behavior has consequences. For someone who claims to want to help this city, your actions have certainly not done that. Sitting on this side of the table requires that you behave in a professional and responsible manner, and it is far different than just addressing the council from the microphone out in the audience. I hope you will learn the difference, because the city cannot afford to continue paying to address your mistakes. The city and its residents deserve far better from you than they have received to date.
First, I would like to thank all the people that chatted with me on this matter since November. Your opinions were extremely valuable to me, and I heard you loud and clear. You asked me to be fair. As one resident told me, no one can be angry with you if you are fair, but we can be angry with you if you make your decision, because you're trying to be politically correct. I've spent about three and a half months reviewing the documents in this case. I don't know if all the other council members have. I reviewed every police statement, I reviewed the transcripts, I reviewed the FOIAs, and countless hours of city council tape. I believe I'm well-versed in the law and the facts in this particular matter. But before I start, I would be asked to be permitted to continue without interruption, although at the beginning of my narrative, it may not appear relevant, but it will by the time I finish. I am not looking at the Board of Ethics. The document that was provided to me was a draft. I was not provided with firm, approved minutes of the Board of Ethics. Second of all, the minutes that I did read had errors in their facts. Third, as people in the community told me, it's your job, Maggie, you were the one that was elected to make the tough decisions, not the Board of Ethics. It's your job to review the documents, not the Board of Ethics. We elected you. So the first thing that I looked at, that you always look at when you are investigating anything, any accusation about anybody, which Board of Ethics did not do, is the credibility of the complaining witness, and that would be Mary Parisian.
Point of order. My credibility is not in question.
No, excuse me, excuse me. I am permitted to continue.
Councilmember Kurzweil, I'm going to return the floor to you.
This, you will see the relevance of this when I finish.
That's fine, I just would like to also remind you that this is not an Oakland County courtroom. Please continue.
Okay. To begin, Parisian stated in a statement filed with the South Lyon Police Department that Carl Richards made statements regarding the layout of my home. She stated under oath, "I am deeply uncomfortable with knowing the layout of my home."
Point of order. My conduct is not in question, Carl Richards says.
It is in question. That's the problem. So I reviewed the transcripts. I was unable to find any testimony in which Carl Richards identified the layout of Mary Parisian's home. That would include the kitchen, the bathrooms, hallways, stairways, staircases, nothing. That is not what he said, and it's not there. I also looked at the police report. The police report also states, as Mary Parisian says, that Carl Richards has weapons. There was no evidence in the record anywhere. She said it in present tense. He has no weapons. Next, in her verified statement regarding the PPO, she deliberately and intentionally checked the box in the affirmative. Does the respondent have a license to carry a firearm? This too is another lie. Carl Richards does not have a license to carry a concealed weapon. That was a lie. So why would somebody make that statement on an application for a, on a.
You are deflecting, Councilmember Kurzweil. You are deflecting to protect a friend.
Mr. Mayor, no.
You are protecting a friend, you are deflecting.
You don't know how I'm going to vote.
This is disgusting behavior.
No, Mary. Mary, please stop. Please. You don't know how I'm going to vote.
I know exactly how you're going to vote.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Well, you're wrong.
Surprise me.
Okay, well, anyway, so, so the reason somebody would check that on the PPO application was because it is more likely than not that you will get your PPO granted if the judge believes you have a license to carry a concealed weapon. Next, we have the stories that were made up regarding Ryan Laer. We know those weren't true. We also know that in a statement that Mary Parisian made to the South Lyon Police Department, she stated that Ryan Laer was on her front porch, but yet, at the PPO hearing, she stated under oath.
Mr. Mayor, my conduct is not in question.
That's the problem, Mary.
Councilmember Kurzweil, I'm going to ask you to wrap this up.
If you have an issue with me, take it to the Board of Ethics, take it to the police.
I, I will be taking this to the Board of Ethics.
Oh, I have, absolutely.
Kurzweil, please.
So the case that I am relying on, basically, is Renee Swain versus Michael Morris. It was in the Oakland County District Court, Oakland Circuit Court, and in that case, the plaintiff brought a case regarding sexual harassment, sexual assault. And in that case, the court dismissed the case because they found that the plaintiff had been lying. So I would just like to say, if you're going to come before this council, and if you are going to ask for relief, and if you want us to go after somebody on this council, you have an obligation to tell the truth. And that has not been the case with respect to Mary Parisian. She has not told the truth. I have gone through these transcripts, and I have a problem rendering discipline with respect to an individual that already has a PPO against him, when I already have that strong evidence that there has not been truth, and that this PPO was obtained through legal manipulation and falsity.
Nothing to do with the matter at hand.
So, so that's the problem that I'm having, and that's the problem the community is having with this case.
Councilmember Kurzweil, for the third time, I'm going to ask you to wrap this up.
I think what I've also done, and I'm going to enter the Swain case in the record, I am also going to enter my opinion on the First Amendment, and make sure that becomes part of the record also. So I just, I'm not going to participate in corruption when you can't tell the truth. You have breach of public trust, and you have public corruption, and I'm just going to wash my hands of it. She's got a PPO, and that's it. Let it go.
May I rebut?
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Kurzweil, I don't understand how you can possibly think this behavior's okay. This is the second time a neutral body has looked at this and said it is a problem. The first time, the court issued the PPO, they indicated it was inappropriate. The second time, the Board of Ethics found it was egregious, and yet, you're still blind. You are the individual who put Carl Richards on this board to begin with.
Oh, that's a lie.
You are the individual who put Carl Richards on this council.
What a lie.
And of course, you need to make sure he stays looking good, and he does not look good. This is his, his wrongdoing, and you are doing everything in your power to protect this man. And it doesn't matter to you whose windows he's looking in, or what he's going around this, this town saying, or who he's, who he's bothering. That doesn't matter to you. However, I am deeply flattered and amused that you think that this is just a game, and that you can just blindly turn an eye to it, and try to turn it so that I am doing something wrong. If I lied, do you think I would have gotten the PPO? Do you think I hoodwinked a judge? If I lied, do you think the Board of Ethics, three very intelligent individuals who pored over these documents for over a month? over these documents for over a month or two, I would have been able to hoodwink them? I guarantee you, no, I'm not that smart. No. So, I am deeply offended that you think that this is okay. You need to look past your biases, and you need to look at the behavior for what it is. Don't even look at it as Mary Parisian, look at it as any human being. Would it be okay to walk into a local business and call them a topless dancer at a gay bar with their tits hanging out? Is that okay for a council member to say? Is that okay? Is that okay? No, it's not. It's inappropriate, and you would be just as livid as I am right now, because if it were you, if it were anyone else, I would defend you, because that's inappropriate behavior despite my biases, despite who you are, despite if maybe I don't like you, maybe I do. You look at the behavior, you don't look at the individual. Shame on you, and shame on who you represent. You represent a community. You're supposed to be better than that. As for Carl, Carl knows what he did. He didn't fight the PPO. He never appealed the PPO. In fact, he admitted it, but you're not once stating that. You're turning it and you're deflecting it to make it look as though I am the bad guy here. Again, my amusement is that you spent hours poring over First Amendment issues Kate saw. I didn't even bother looking at it, the packet that you put in our packet, didn't even bother looking at it, because A, I don't trust your legal skills, and B, I don't trust your personal skills.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurzweil?
First of all, I did not put Carl Richards on the city council. I think everybody knows the Facebook postings that were put out by a former mayor that went after Joyce Cloisey and a former DPW employee that also went after Joyce Cloisey. They made sure that Joyce Cloisey did not get seated on this council. In fact, Mary Parisian made sure Joyce Cloisey did not get on this council when there was a vacancy that was available. So, that's a lie. Second of all, Carl Richards never, ever said to any of the witnesses in the case that testified, that would be Mark Childs and that would be Austin White, that Carl looked at your tits. That information is not in the record.
Can we try and have some decorum here this evening?
Well, I'm just, she brought it up, and that's another lie. And the problem I have with you, Mary Parisian, is not so much what Carl has said, but the fact that this, these are countless times in which people have to question your credibility. You do not tell the truth. You are not an honest individual. You slant the facts to fit your cause. I went through that transcript. I know why that PPO was granted. I have explained to people in this community why it was granted. Nobody gets a PPO based on hearsay unless something was going on at that hearing, and that's what happened in this case. It was a PPO granted on hearsay, unheard of. But, 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 I don't agree with what Carl Richards did. But if you're going to hold Carl Richards to a higher standard of conduct, you better start holding your other elected officials to a higher standard of conduct, and that means when they come to the table, they need to tell the truth. And I would bring this to the Board of Ethics, but that board is so weaponized, there isn't a vote on this board that will put Mary Parisian in front of the Board of Ethics to scrutinize her behavior, her inaccuracies, and her misstatements, not only to the court, but to city council. So, Mary, we have different opinions. You're going to get your censure tonight. We just disagree on certain issues, and I think both you and Carl need to stand back and take a look at what both of you have done to this community, both of you, because many people have seen through the lies. And that's why you don't see too many people here supporting me, Mary, because the community knows what's going on. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Parisian, I'm going to ask that you keep it brief so we can move along.
I wanted to say thank you to the Board of Ethics, the three members that spent countless hours analyzing documents, meeting, discussing, and ultimately deliberating. Thank you very much for all of your effort. Additionally, I never received an apology, a sincere apology. And when the board met on February 19th, they gave me just that. They looked at me, and they gave me an apology, and they didn't have to do that, but they did, and I can't tell you how much that means to me and my husband. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Kivell, I believe you had something up for discussion.
I was hoping to read the language that I think would be appropriate for this censure. At our regular meeting of the City of South Lyon, Michigan, held at the City Hall on March 11th, 2019, whereas the City of South Lyon is governed by the city charter, excuse me, adopted October 5th, 1970, as amended, and whereas the charter, as amended, provides for six city council members to be elected for four-year terms and the mayor to be elected for two-year terms, and whereas city elections take place in odd-numbered years for half the council and the mayor, and whereas the election held November 7th, 2017, Carl Richards won election to city council, and on November 13, 2017, took the oath of office and was seated as a member of the South Lyon City Council. And whereas the city council at the November 26, 2018, meeting requested the city's Board of Ethics to conduct an investigation to determine if a violation of the city's ethics ordinance by Councilman Carl Richards had occurred during the incident that took place on October 31st, 2018, at a local business, and whereas the city's Board of Ethics unanimously voted a violation of Section 2-73A had occurred by conduct in Councilman Richard's private life that was unbecoming of an elected official and not above reproach, excuse me, and whereas the city Board of Ethics unanimously voted a violation of Section 2.73B had occurred by Councilman Richard's conduct, which has undermined respect for city officials and employees and for the city as a public body. And whereas the city council agrees with the conclusions drawn by the Board of Ethics and agrees with their recommendation, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of South Lyon proclaims censure on Councilman Carl Richards.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, should this be a roll call vote? I think so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Is Mary Parisian permitted to vote? I think she has a conflict of interest.
I agree. I was concerned about that. Well, I spoke to our city attorney, Tim Wilhelm, and I will turn to him now.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, I've given some consideration to this issue. I believe that there is a question of bias, but that is not an item that comes up under the conflict of interest in the charter or under the ethics ordinance. I think it's an issue regarding process and procedure, and I don't think it rises to the level where it disqualifies her from participating or voting.
Would you be happy if I didn't vote? Because I can excuse myself.
However, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The charter, I believe it's Section 4.6, does indicate, and I don't have the language right in front of me, I can get it if council wants, basically indicates a council member may not vote on an issue pertaining to their own conduct. So, to the extent that there is a motion pending for censure of Councilmember Richards, under that charter provision, he would be excluded from voting on the matter.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the votes are there for the censure, but I think she does have a bias, and I think, you know, once again, you know, it would be cleaner if she didn't vote and removed herself from her bias and her prejudice. I understand she did speak at Board of Ethics, the first Board of Ethics hearing. I think that was, that sort of led me to conclude that she had more than a bias, she had a strong prejudice, and I think she clearly has a conflict of interest. So, I think it's only cleaner for her, makes her look better, given her light. So, I think probably the votes are there. It would just be better if she didn't vote.
Councilmember Parisian?
I've changed my mind. It's my right to vote under the charter. I wouldn't be doing my duty as a council member. I'm choosing to vote. If you have an issue with it, take it up with the Board of Ethics.
I do believe that the charter does say that by unanimous consent of council, we can, I think if you read that charter provision, unless otherwise approved by unanimous consent.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim?
So, the Councilmember Kurzweil raises a question under the charter, which I think presumes a question of conflict of interest. Without further information, I don't see, and I'm not, you know, we're in a meeting at this point in time, I don't have an official reasoned legal opinion in writing, but I do not see a traditional conflict of interest. There's no familial, financial, there is an interest here. There is a question of bias, however, Councilmember Parisian is one of seven, Councilmember Richards will be excluded, so one of six that will vote on the matter. If you draw analogy, someone with strong opinions about a particular issue does not necessarily, their opinions and the strength of those opinions does not necessarily exclude them from participation or create a conflict of interest.
Okay.
However, to the point that's been raised, she could voluntarily recuse herself and exclude herself from participation.
Okay. So, we've had a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote, and at that time, Councilmember Parisian can make her decision on whether or not to vote. Councilmember Richards will not be allowed to vote. Does that sound about right?
Lisa, call me last.
Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Parisian?
I'll recuse myself.
Belchak?
Yes.
Moving on, we'll now discuss the road closure for the pint-sized marathon.
Hi. Can I have a moment to speak?
Yes, please.
Stephanie Rife. I'm the director of the race. The pint-sized marathon will happen for the fifth time this year. This is the third time we've ran the same route with the same police presence. Nothing's changed with that. Last year, we did have a couple of issues with the park and usage of that, so I don't know how the language is worded in your paperwork, but if there could be a little bit more exclusive use during the time of 11:30 to 12:45. I know you can't completely prevent people from being there, but there are three events at the same time, and that proved to be a little bit burdensome for us. Normally, I have paperwork and posters and everything, but we this year have changed a little bit. Footprints Fitness is now going to transition to a company called Foundation Wellness, and we're having a physical space now. We're going to be opening up in a yoga studio that's open on the other end of town at 11 Mile, and we'll still be providing family-based fitness, but wellness for everybody. And we believe that everybody should deserve wellness and find the value in wellness, and so we'll continue to use the race profits for that to provide low-cost services.
That's great.
Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
Mr. Rife, I run this race every year. I love it. So, I mean, and I bring my friends and my family to run it with me. So, continue doing what you're doing. Excellent job, and I look forward to running it again. Thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to mention that we cannot necessarily exclude individuals from being at the park on that particular day, but what we can do is prevent anyone else from using or requesting the use of the facility for some other sort of event or anything else going on. So, we do take that into account, and I'm not sure if the police chief has any comments that he wants to make about it as well.
As far as I know, there's nothing else scheduled on that same day. Last year was kind of crazy with the, and we tried to work that situation out, talking to the other parties that were involved, and it seemed to work itself out pretty decent, but I don't think at this point there's anything scheduled besides your event this year, so...
Has there been anything different done with the master calendar? Because that's kind of what's come up before, is that there was no place for, that was the pushback we got from other people, so the Historical Society, and then there was a river cleanup, but there was nowhere for them to find out what was going on, so...
I know the river cleanup is different this year, different date, so as far as I know, there's nothing, there's no schedule conflict.
Not at that particular location. I think that is the day for the community-wide yard sale and garage sales and some other things, but not specifically at that location or that would influence the event.
Councilmember Parisian?
I'll make the motion to approve the closure of Dorothy Street between Pontiac Trail and McMunn, McMunn between Dorothy and McCatty, McCatty between McMunn and Washington, Washington between McCatty and the rail trail on May 4th, 2019, between 11:30 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and to approve use of the Witch's Hat Depot, McCatty Park, and rail trails used for the pint-sized marathon.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks for doing this.
Yep.
Lisa, please note that I had stayed from going. Thank you.
Due to conflict of interest.
All right, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Nobody has anything on the budget, we'll move on to the managers.
I do.
Okay.
Question, sorry, I just caught that. So, are we officially meeting on Thursday, April 4th? Is that the confirmed date?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Parisian?
No, you're okay.
That's what I was going to update within the manager's report, that we have scheduled that meeting for 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 4th. We will have the final budget numbers, both revenues and expenditures that we're going to be providing to council the week before that particular meeting. We'll have the meeting agenda structured so that we will get through each one of the departments, and council members will still have the ability to ask specific questions. I ask if you have some questions in advance of the meeting by going through the budget, we can answer some of those and have prepared answers at the particular meeting either by staff or myself. If you have any questions regarding that meeting in advance, please let us know, but we do expect that we'll have the budget prepared for you and given out to all members the week before the meeting. I want to update council as well as the public regarding the border, March border view has convened to hear appeals on 2019 property tax values. An inflation rate this year was 2.4%. The board had their first meeting on Tuesday, March 5th, and that was their organizational meeting, and they did also hear appeals that day. We have two more meetings that are taking place. One is actually taking place tonight from 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., and the next day they're going to be meeting is Wednesday, March 13th. We'll have appeals being heard from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon and from 1:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thanks. Does anyone have anything for Paul? Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Did you just say that that is now on the 4th?
Thursday, March 4th, that's correct.
Was it communicated?
March 4th or April 4th?
Sorry, April 4th.
Was it communicated as a different day previously?
Yes, I believe we sent out the emails making that change.
But it was never confirmed, I thought.
Lisa, what was the last email that we sent out?
I just sent out an email saying, based on conflict, scheduling conflict, the two days we chose in March wouldn't work, so we chose that day. And I sent out emails to everybody, and so far, everybody's able to attend.
I thought I had something that said April 2nd, and so that's the date I requested off of Mark.
Yeah, I'll double-check my email when I get back to the office, but I'm sure it was Thursday, April 4th.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
But I'll double-check. You may have got it incorrectly.
Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
Just for the record, I did email back March 31st regarding April 4th, and I'm not able to attend, but by all means, like, if this date works for council, council should definitely meet. I'll just catch up. Thank you.
All right.
I do have something else. Paul, you just mentioned the citywide garage sale being approved for the first weekend in May. Previously, the board had moved that, a prior board had moved that to the third weekend in May due to the weather of the first weekend in May. It seems to always be bad weather, so they had moved it, and then it got moved back to the first weekend in May, and I'm just curious to know if we could possibly move it back to the third weekend just for weather and so that people have better sales.
I guess it's up for council to decide. We had discussions of things within the office and when things were moved back and forth. I'm totally, I have to say, I'm totally unfamiliar with what had transpired in prior years, so it's difficult for me to comment. I'm not sure, Lisa, if you can comment on the prior years or how we handled that.
Well, it seems like no matter what weekend we choose to have it, we end up with bad weather. It's like last year when we had the spring cleanup, and it was pouring on us that entire day. We didn't want to have it the second weekend of May because that was Mother's Day weekend, and I think that's when we had it last year, and people weren't happy about it being Mother's Day weekend. We planned on the spring cleanup the third weekend of May, so we thought the first weekend of May would work, because then the last weekend of May is the holiday. So, it's just a matter of making a decision, because we never know what the weather's going to be.
Okay.
Thanks for the insight on that. Thanks for the insight on that. Does anyone else have anything for Paul? Okay. At this point, we will open the floor for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. I'm here tonight to also say that I support the censure against Carl Richards for his behavior. He knows how I feel about the situation. However, I do want to state the correct facts that were corrected in the hearing, at the court hearing, which I was present. Ms. Parisian lawyer accused me of being on her property, which she has denied to the papers and other places. She said she asked for a sincere apology from Carl Richards. She got that. Again, you lie because you shouldn't check your facts. It's here in the council meeting, anybody can review the videotape. Carl apologized to you, you refused to accept it. So, for you to sit there and say that Carl never apologized to you is ridiculous. Unfortunately, you have no intention of ever forgiving Carl. You have sold so many lies that you can't figure out what lie is straight. Second of all, you haven't made an apology to me for lying in a court of law in a police report stating that I was on your property, which I never have been on your property, and you know that. But you wanted to make me out to be a criminal like Carl because I'm friends with Carl. No, I have never been on your property, Ms. Parisian. And until you want to start talking about the facts here in this case, I think you need to go see a psychiatrist and start getting some help, because this is over as of tonight. It's done. You got your censure. Let it go.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer.
At this time, we will close public comment and move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, why don't you start us off tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council and audience and everybody in the viewing, I wish to speak to the censure I received this evening. I, I accept it, okay. Who would ever have known or dreamed in their wildest dreams that this would have come to this? And I'm sorry and I apologize to the whole council that they've been put through this mess, okay, and that the public's had to endure this. Certainly not my intention at any time. Okay. I, if you recall, basically, I admitted, what do you call it? Passive to the three main counts of the thing, you know, tantamount to pleading guilty, consent, okay? And I didn't sweat, didn't go into the small stuff, okay? And I didn't, I didn't want to pursue, okay? Now, under this court order, which I'm under, and they all know about it, okay? I can't say certain things. I could discuss items before the 31st of October, as long as they don't pretend, pertain to the case. Personally, I choose not to do so, okay? It's my own choice. Likewise, from the time the judge says that's my decision and hit the gavel, and the clerk says all rise, from that point on, I could say something. Also, again, I choose not to. I want to add to everyone out there that we all got up from our chairs in the courtroom. We all said, to best of my knowledge, "Thank you, Your Honor," and we left like normal, ordinary, regular, honest citizens, okay, without fuss and commotion. And, yeah, I accept, I accept the censure. I was wrong. Irregardless of misquotations, misrepresentations, creative license exercised by some in the matter, and to agree with Ms. Kurzweil, absolute out-and-out lies about some things. I overlook it. I'm no stranger to the courtroom. I've been there a lot of times. I didn't represent myself very well. Been a number of years. Anyway, I'm, as Ryan said, I'm glad that this is over now, and I hope we can all move on in a fair and open mind. We have a responsibility to the community, to be, each one of us, to be thick-skinned, okay? To bear the responsibility, to bear the blows, to face the public, and keep an open mind amongst ourselves while we're doing it, even if we disagree from time to time, okay? Anyway, that's my prepared statement for the censure. Mr. Mayor, I'd go on to the topics if it's all right with you.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Okay. All right. First of all, last week, I forgot to say anything about the service workers that have been on concentrating on these five blocks in surrounding us right here over the past three weeks during the coldest, most brutal part of the winter. Those guys were out there every day of the week, including Saturday, except for Sunday, and they, we're not paying them a dime. They're working on the cable service primarily and the electrical hookups and all the poles, and bringing us into the modern era, even though there's nowhere any possibility that there's enough service available in this district of town to service the high tech that they're preparing us for. But thank you anyway, all those service workers. I met them in Wendy's and told them, "You guys are heroes." Anyway, next subject. The housing units in McCatty Park, McCatty Park, excuse me, on McCatty Street are coming along. I've stopped by, but I wasn't able to talk to the gentleman working there because they're, they're own private crew and they, they speak Spanish mostly. Out on Dixboro, as I mentioned last week, both sides of the road have been cleared quite a bit. There's no debris out there. I asked Ron Brock about the 50 barrels that were out there, and he said they probably rented them from a barrel company or a sign company. We do the same thing, because the city, I know the city doesn't have 50 barrels, you know? But I wondered, how'd that happen, you know? Well, anyway, he's informed me and told me all about it, and so far, what they've done is beautiful preparation for the widening and the paving of that section of Dixboro Road. Now, there's one thing, it's, it's my last item. We've got a big deal in town here, at least I think it's a big deal, okay? Brookdale Plaza, just on the former site of the Playland in the south end of the Brookdale Plaza, formerly occupied by Fran Schowerman, okay, when she had her business in there. Then it was Playland for a few years. Now has been converted, and a company by the name of Clearwater Contracting from Dearborn is digging a basement, in fact, they've already dug it, inside the large building. And the purpose of this large basement inside the building, all approved, is to become a swimming pool for toddlers, small children, and older retired people. So, I've been, I've been informed, okay? The same company that operated Playland, which was a franchise, is not doing this. It's being done by a British recreation firm, which has these swimming pools for toddlers and small kids in other states. I have a question in my mind, being of a small town and a small frame of mind, sometimes, is there any profit in, potential profit in something like this? We can all, what we can do is wish them the most of success, but certainly, a big development in a somewhat of a bleak end of town as far as new construction goes, and I wish them the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I just want to let everyone know that Active Faith will have their Strikeout Hunger event at the Pins Bowling Center on Sunday, March 24th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So, get your team together, come on down for some fun food and prizes, and support Active Faith's food pantry and their programs. You can get all the details from their website or their Facebook page, Active Faith Community Services of South Lyon. I'd also like to recognize those businesses from our community that have made donations to help they, help make this event a success. This includes Perfect Floors, Martin's Hardware, Cook Automotive, Grand Trunk Home, Lion's Book Den, and Peter's True Value, just to name a few. On another note, I'd like to recognize Fire Chief Vogel and members of the South Lyon Fire Department for their efforts in successfully obtaining two different grants. The first grant came from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority to purchase a new thermal imaging camera to aid in locating the source of a fire and identifying the location of individuals in a burning building. The second grant was awarded by the State of Michigan and Home Depot for 216 smoke detectors and 36 carbon monoxide alarms. The South Lyon Fire Department will have a smoke detector blitz in the near future. If you are in need of a smoke detector, please contact the South Lyon Fire Department at (248) 437-2616. A detector will be provided to you at no charge. The units will be delivered by members of the South Lyon Fire Department, who will also install and test the units. If you have a fresh 9-volt alkaline battery available, please provide it to the firefighter, otherwise one will provide it, be provided to you. Batteries not included, just like at Christmas. Also, if your smoke detectors' carbon monoxide alarms are in working order, now is a good time to replace the batteries and check their operation. Make a note to do this each year when daylight saving time begins and also when it ends. And finally, as a reminder, all smoke detectors that are over 10 years old should be replaced.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have tonight is to thank our DPW workers who are getting us through that nasty winter this year. Done a fantastic job, and I, you guys always do such a good job, so, thank you. And, and that's it. I had a couple of those same events, so I'm not going to repeat them. Everyone have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things I'd like to say. In regards to Councilmember Richards' comments, I'm sorry, but I think you're very much mistaken if this ends tonight. You have a PPO in place. Need I to remind you that you still have to abide by that PPO for the better part of this year? Failure to do so will result in 93 days in jail, and I think you're very much mistaken if I won't hold you true to that. You had indicated that you didn't think that anything was going to come of this, and that this, putting the board through all of this was such an ordeal. I'm sure you did honestly, truly think that. I, I do truly feel for you because I think you do truly believe that nothing was going to come of this. But clearly, you don't understand that not all women are going to sit back and take it. Not all women are going to be victims. People are going to stand up, and they're going to fight back against not only you, but any individual, man or woman, who thinks it's okay to speak about other people in the way that you speak about them, and to couple that with your sexually charged acts. It's inappropriate, it's not okay. Sure, we're moving on, but I hope that you grasp what you're saying and what you're doing. And by your council comments just a moment ago, I don't feel that at all. So, again, that PPO is still in place. It does not end tonight. Please be cognizant of your behavior. And as for Maggie, you indicate that there was, there's no support for me. Clearly, you haven't watched the news, you haven't watched every radio station, listened to every radio station, every newspaper has said loud and clear who Carl Richards is, and his name will forever be smeared in that light. You have to live with that every day, Carl. Maggie, I've had people come out here and support, but they don't need to be here every meeting. I get the emails, I get the flowers, I get the phone calls, but I don't need to call them up and have them come to my aid because I'm a strong individual who can handle my own, and that is exactly what I'm doing tonight. Thank you to this council, thank you to the Board of Ethics, thank you to the citizens of South Lyon for all of your support. I can't thank you enough. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Parisian. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Yes. First of all, in response to Mary Parisian's comments, first of all, I would like to remind her that she does not have a lot of support out there in the community. I have been out there in the community for almost three and a half months, and I think they are absolutely disgusted with her behavior. I think they have caught her in numerous misstatements, numerous inaccuracies, and I think that the community has seen this for what it is. It was an attempt to remove Carl Richards from office, and obviously, it didn't work because the man is still here. With respect to you being strong, I'd just like to remind you, you are not a sexual assault victim. There was no sexual assault of you. You have not been sexually abused by Carl Richards. You are the recipient of trash talk. That is what happened. You are the recipient of trash talk, just like Glenn Kivell is, the mayor is, I am. You sit on this council, and people trash talk about you, and that's the bottom line. Additionally, I'd like to let the public know that Carl Richards never looked into her bedroom windows, and I have the proof for that. I have a picture of the back of her house that I pulled off of the internet. Carl Richards was not tall enough to look into the bedroom windows, which she so stated under oath. It's the picture of the back of her house that she didn't want anybody to see, but I'll provide it if anybody wants to see it. So, we do have a lot of inaccuracies, misstatements, whether or not they were deliberate, whether somebody just, you know, had a hard time analyzing the facts. Mary, you may be a nice person, but you're not a bright person. As Carl stated in the hearing, you didn't pass your bar exam a couple of times. So, don't go after me and talk about me and my professionalism, when you yourself have had problems academically struggling in the legal field. So, if you want to keep throwing the trash, we can keep throwing the trash, but at some point, you've got to stop and you've got to grow up and accept the fact that there are some people out there in this community that don't like you. And if you think what Carl Richards said about you is bad, you should hear what's being said about you now. I'm not going to repeat it. I don't think it's appropriate, but you let the genie out of the box, and I think this community has given you a good taste of the First Amendment. Next, I would like to encourage everybody to make sure that you attend the Culture Arts Commission's quote show on Friday. I understand it's going to be a packed, packed room in here. They have many, many quilts that are coming in. In fact, as Josie said, there are quilts that are coming in overnight, so, from Chicago. I do believe there's a couple of quilts out there from some international quilters, and I believe those quilters are from Japan. So, I think this is going to be an exciting, exciting show, and I would encourage everybody to be there. Chief Vogel, I also want to thank you for the grants. Word travels quickly, I want to thank you for your hard work. And also, I used to sit on the Board of Directors at Active Faith, so, please support Active Faith and support their fundraiser that they're having. This is a very, very good community. This is an organization that keeps its money within the community, which is what we need. So, please, everybody, support Active Faith, support the Culture Arts Commission, and have an absolutely wonderful week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Kivell?
I'm, I'm glad we're at the conclusion of this. There's been an awful lot of negativity associated with this entire activity, and I'm hoping like crazy we can get out from under that. We've got, you know, the notion when, when I was creating that resolution, essentially, it was just a reflection that these activities that keep putting us in a bad, bad light to the southeast Michigan area, they just need to end up stopping, for heaven's sakes. We've got such a lovely community here. To have this kind of mischief going on in the background endlessly is, it's really not conducive to our goals of trying to build the community, the downtown that we want, and I can't imagine that people that are driven by business opportunities are seeing this as overly problematic, but it would be a lot more easy to sell us if we had this just raging, strong, positive attitude that's always being projected. So, hopefully, we're, we're making that turn now, and that'll end up being our future, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. I just want to say thank you to the second graders at Kent Lake Elementary and Sayre Elementary that had me out to talk about social studies, one of my favorite topics when I was in school. Thank you for all the kind letters. Bob snuck out, but the, the second graders are still strong on that dog park. And then quickly, I wanted to send out a congratulations to the South Lyon Unified Hockey Team. They went on to win the Lakes Valley Conference Championship this year, and so, congratulations to them. So, the unified team is actually hockey players from both East and South Lyon. So, congratulations to them on a fantastic year, and with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?